Could get everybody, councilmember Rick, to take a seat. Not that I'm picking on you, but...
Yeah, that's gonna be...
Yeah, that no clock is... yeah. All right. Good evening. I am calling to order the January 14th, 2025, first meeting of the year. Happy New Year, everybody. Of the Fountain City Council to order, please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Roll call clerk, please. Attendance, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Rick?
Here.
Councilmember Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have six members present.
Thank you very much. That takes us on to item 4.1, Presentations, a proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Councilmember Hinton?
Yes. So proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day, January 20th, 2025, whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, and dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, equality, and justice for all through nonviolent means. And whereas the federal and state legislation has recognized the legacy of Reverend Dr. King as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders by designating the third Monday of January as a federal holiday. Whereas on August 28th, 1963, the Reverend Dr. King delivered a historic speech at the Lincoln Memorial, which called for an end to racism in the United States, saying, "Let us not wallow in the valley of despair." I say to you today, my friends, and so even though we face difficulties of today and tomorrow, I still have a dream. It is a dream deeply rooted in the American dream. I have a dream that one day this nation will rise up and live out the true meaning of its creed. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and whereas the Reverend Dr. King also said in this historic address, "And this will be the day, this will be the day when all God's children will be able to sing with new meaning. My country tis to Thee, sweet land of liberty, of Thee I sing. Let freedom ring from the snow-capped Rockies of Colorado." And whereas the campaign for the federal holiday in honor of Reverend Dr. King began soon after his assassination in 1968, and President Ronald Reagan signed the holiday into law in 1983, and was subsequently first observed three years later. And whereas every year, events are held across multiple days in the Pike's Peak region to commemorate and highlight the legacy of Reverend Dr. King. And whereas the city of Fountain proudly recognizes the spirit and determination and achievements of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Fountain of Colorado hereby recognizes the third Monday of January each year moving forward as Martin Luther King Jr. Day to honor all the accomplishments and sacrifice of those who work to ensure equality, dignity, and opportunity for all, read in perpetuity on the 12th day of January 2021.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hinton. That takes us on to item 4.1, the second one, Proposal to Make Fountain a Blue Zone Community. Dr. McCready, welcome. And if you could state your name for the record, please.
James Joseph McCready.
Thank you. Oh, and the middle button is the microphone, so that the little circle, let's see, not right...
Under that?
Yeah, see how the green is right up there? Now you're on. Okay, thank you.
I'm not a technology siphon, but I found the button.
There you go.
I'm Dr. James Joseph McCready, practicing over with Dr. Waters on Cinefae Avenue. I don't know what else I should say as an introduction. I've been in practice for 40 years, and I came out of retirement to go and practice with Dr. Waters. He's a great guy and has a wonderful practice. I have been interested in this Blue Zone initiative since I found out about it. I've been a chiropractor, like I said, I've been a chiropractor for 40 years. The Blue Zone Initiative, I don't know, is everyone familiar with it at all, or just a little?
I'll be honest, I Googled it when I saw it on the agenda because I never heard of it before.
So I just have a little bit of information about it, but as an introduction, I guess we can go to the first slide. I think it's, the Blue Zones were developed by a gentleman named Dave Butner for the National Geographic. And what they were interested in was finding what stimulus, or what was the reason people in certain areas of the world lived longer? So they did some, they did extensive research, and they determined, they found five areas of the world that they wanted to look at, and they went, they went to these different places. Barbega in Sardinia, Arakiya in Greece, the Nickeon Peninsula in Costa Rica, they visited the seven days Adventist in California, and in Okinawa, Japan. And they found there, there was the areas where people were living over 100 years. And they found nine key characteristics of all these areas. They all had nine things that they all did in common. So they call that the Power Nine, yeah, the Power Nine. And so they came back, Mr. Butner came back, and they have, it's a Netflix series, so you can watch it on Netflix, it's very, I really like it. And it goes through how they came up with all this information. And so, once, once they determined what can be done to improve a community's longevity, the, Mr. Butner started a foundation, it's called the Blue Zone Foundation, and they started this initiative. And it started up in Minnesota with the first city, and they've subsequently done this in other small and large cities. Phoenix has initiated this program, but other, they started with smaller cities because there is a certain amount of community engagement involved for them to come and do the project. Like if nobody wants to do it, they don't want to do it either. So you have to kind of get the community, you know, interested. And if there's enough people interested, then they will put their time and resources into developing it. So that kind of summarizes that. The next slide. Let's see, well, from what I know, I just moved here two years ago, and to be with my grandchildren and my daughter, and, but Fountain seems to be a pretty cool place. I, I really like it here. There's so much community out there, you know, the fountain parks and all the community things that there's done, I thought this kind of fit for what they're looking for in a small community to start the project. I don't know, like, one of the things they do, well, the objective they have is to integrate the Blue Zone principles to transform Fountain into a model of health and longevity. This involves promoting healthy behaviors, creating supportive environments, and fostering a sense of purpose and community cohesion. And when I, as I got deeper into this and I read it, I said, you know, it kind of really fits for where we're at. I'm, I'm interested in this because I've, the things that we're going to talk about, the power of nine, I've been preaching to my patients for 40 years, so it kind of fits in with exactly what I think should be done. And now it's verified by, of course, some scientific studies that National Geographic has done to verify it. And next slide. This just summarizes the key strategies that they try to initiate. Promoting physical activity, expand and improve walkability and likability of public spaces. Like I said, we go to the fountain park every day with the kids, so I know that that's something that's key for this community. Recreational infrastructure, we go to all the parks, so I know a lot about that. Implement community fitness and programs and events. I, I'm personally, I just, I was talking with Scott, I have a book I've been working on, on chair yoga, and I'm going to start a chair yoga class for seniors at our office, you know, events for, you know, again, community involvement in physical activity. Encouraging plant-based diets. Now, this, although seems, you know, like a plant-based diet, you know, living in Colorado, which ranching is the biggest thing, so I get it, but it doesn't mean you don't eat meat, but it does mean that you change your focus. And that's what we're really looking for, is trying to support local farmers and markets, community gardens, you know, freshly sourced product, produce. Partner with schools, businesses to provide healthier food choices. I'm sorry, I'm between bifocals and my regular glasses, it's like a, you know, if I put them on, I can't see, and if I take them off, I can't see, it doesn't matter. Then conduct workshops and, let's see, seminars on nutrition and cooking. Again, I'm not, as a new member of the community, obviously, this is something I'm very interested in. I was telling Scott, I'm working on a Mediterranean-based cookbook that I've been using myself to lose quite a bit of weight over the last couple of years, 100 pounds, almost 100 pounds, so. So that's something I'm very interested in, but I think most people are interested in eating better. Fostering social connections, organizing community and social events, clubs, to reduce social isolation, develop, let's see, intergenerational programs that build relations across age gaps, facilitating volunteer opportunities, and the next one, creating purpose by facilitating volunteer opportunities and purposeful activities for all ages, and then finally encourage businesses and nonprofits to prioritize employee wellness and engagement. So that's kind of a summary of what they put on. I don't have any more than that, but I will be getting in contact with them. They've said that, they've reached out to me right after our meeting, I met with Scott just to discuss it. The person, this is a volunteer type of thing that they do, there's, and so the person who handles this part of the foundation is on vacation till today. So they, she couldn't put, and that was from last December the 5th. So, but we'll be getting more information if there's an interest, we'll be able, and we'll find out more of what they're going to do, which is the next slide. They want, you know, public support, if there's policy changes, it doesn't seem like they're, to me, again, it's your decision, but this is what they would be looking for. If needed, introducing zoning ordinances to enhance accessibility to healthy living spaces. Provide incentives for businesses that offer health-positive services. Establish public and private partnerships to fund and sustain the Blue Zone initiatives. Again, the pilot program is what we would be looking at if they decide to do it, and, but again, there's this community engagement element. Engaging the community is crucial. They'll host informational sessions, distribute, distribute educational materials, they'll leverage social media to raise awareness, so they, and to get people involved in the initiative. And I believe they'll do that, you know, as part of their setup, but again, she hasn't gotten back to me as to, you know, what they're, let's say, what they would do before we actually decided to do it. But again, the reason I brought it to you was, it is a community engagement, and I didn't want to go running around, you know, waving a flag saying we're going to make Fountain a Blue Zone, and you guys don't know what the heck's going on, because you're the ones that really, you know, that should be in charge, not me. I mean, I shouldn't, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but if there's no interest at the community level, then, you know, it's a great idea, but not all good ideas need to be implemented, so that's why I came tonight.
Thank you. It's a lot of information out of a program I was totally unaware of before, like I said, it hit the agenda, and you've given us a lot more information tonight.
I'd like to give you my card. I'd like to talk about it further with some, I'm with the senior center also.
Oh, terrific.
So I'm going to go to Scott first.
I'm glad, because I wanted to ask.
Then I'll come back to you. Scott?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I had the opportunity to talk to Dr. McCready just in preparation for this, to give me an idea of what the role for the city was. And just want to step back a little bit. As you can see, if you're looking at a Blue Zone community, there are, and he listed just a number of factors dealing with, you know, nutritional issues, so there, there really, a lot of these communities have a religious aspect to it, right? There's, there's religious communities that get involved, there are nonprofit service groups that get involved, there are the, the food nutrition groups that get involved. So the role of city isn't as necessarily the tip of the spear, but as definitely a critical supporter, because you can look, if, if one of the issues, for example, is providing more trails, right, more recreational opportunities, that would be the city's role down the road if this group that Dr. McCready would be leading and working with, whatever, if they started moving forward with their concept and, and getting support from the business community and these other communities, we, there is a role for the city as well. And the roles, I mean, he has a couple of them up there. And so I think that's kind of what you're looking at, right, Dr. McCready? Just informational, make us aware, we go from there?
Yeah, I, like I said, I wouldn't want to initiate something that nobody really wanted. I don't want, not a troublemaker or anything, just a doctor, so, but I thought it was a good idea. I'm okay, I'm, I don't work full-time with Dr. Waters, I only work a few hours in the evening seeing patients, I babysit for my grandson during the day, so I'm like semi-retired, and so I have ample time to, to kind of organize it and see if, see if there's, to get the information, to see if there's enough interest to move forward. Again, I haven't even been contacted by them due to their schedule, to find out what they would need from us, if they need anything at all, other than, hey, we're going to, if you're interested, we'll try and promote it to get community interest. Again, I do know from having read the information that, that they have put out and seen the information about the cities, they do really work to highly engage the community, because they, they use a questionnaire to determine the current longevity of the community, based on the, all the participants' response, and they, they use that and factor it, and they can tell you, well, your average longevity for your community is 68 or 78, or whatever it might be. or whatever it might be. And then they work from that to then build on that to add, um, years based on how people change their responses after a year of participating in the program. So if there's an interest, I would be happy to continue to look into it and get more information and report back in a month or two, depending on how quickly they get back to me. And again, give you more information and see if there's something we might want to move forward with as a community.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah. So this is very interesting to me. So I'm retired military and have been living in many different countries. I've witnessed this firsthand, you know, um, living in Korea, they do tai chi in the afternoon and in parts, and they do a lot of walks. And living in Italy, that, that one actual special on Netflix, I've been to that place, and it's very healthy lifestyle. Everybody's walking and the, the way they eat and the way they, just the whole lifestyle. And I think that, um, as, as Americans, um, this is something that we can potentially adopt, right? And it's, it's just the way of living. And if, if this something that, as a city, that we can kind of support is what Scott was talking about, having more trails, having more opportunities for people to get out and about, I think is probably the, the, the thing that will kind of spur on that and help people kind of change the mindset of what you, what you take in and then kind of what you put out. And so I appreciate you.
Well, you bring up a hugely astute observation that I, you know, talk to my patients all day long about. What, what they refer to in the Blue Zone is, um, healthy movement. You know, um, as Americans, we get marketed to, I mean, constantly. And of course, the gym marketing or, you know, that, you know, in order, in order to get in fit, you have to go to a gym or you have to do something special. When in fact, as they've looked at these different areas, the people that are most fit, they just don't sit around, you know? You know, they're active, they're, like you said, they're walking up the hill and down the hills, they're doing this, they're doing housework, they're cleaning their kids home, they're, they're doing this, they're doing that. And that cumulative activity is what lends itself to, you know, a healthy lifestyle, not using, you know, like he talks about, you know, sweeping, you know, and vacuuming is as actually, you know, it's good for you. I mean, it keeps you active, and there's nothing wrong with it. We tend to, you know, the, the normal activities a day, we trying to sometimes say, well, we don't want to cook, or we don't want to clean, and we don't do this, when actually those are stimulating and are cumulative for your health. So whether it's, like you said, walking or gardening, whatever it might be, it's, it's cumulative and it's, we, to get people away from, well, if I don't go to the gym, I can't get in shape, so I'm not going to bother, which is, that was my mentality for a long time. That's something we should really work to get rid of because that's not the key to long-term health. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Hersberg?
I just want to thank you. Um, I was really glad to see you on the agenda to present today, and I just thank you for this great information, and I'm very interested to learn, to learn more about this.
Oh, terrific.
And I'll look for that Netflix.
Yes.
And then watch that. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. I'll look forward to hearing from you.
All right, thank you. Scott, you're the point person on that one since you've met with him already? Okay. Perfect. Okay. That takes us on to item 4.2, Boards, Commissions, and Committees. Item 4.2, Fountain Urban Renewal Authority Board Appointments. Ms. Bailey?
Evening, Mayor, Council, and Public. Kimberly Bailey, Executive Director for the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority. We're pleased to recommend three new appointments to serve on our board and commission. They, we do have two of the three present with us this evening, but all three bring a wealth of background and expertise to help drive our mission on behalf of blight remediation in the community and bring in new services and/or private investment for development parcels. So with that said, um, the first appointment recommendation is Ms. Megan Kane. She is not with us tonight. She just welcomed her second baby in November, so she is, um, tending to those motherly duties as she should, but she's actually transitioning from our Economic Development Commission. She's finished her first year of term on EDC. We excluded some of her great talents under placemaking. She's done very much international abroad travel. She understands what it means to cultivate a sense of place for gathering of the community, kind of similar to, um, what our doctor was talking about potentially earlier. And then with that, um, she's actually a third-generation Fountainite, so she brings a lot of passion to give back to our community. She's one of the three. The second one is Mr. Craig Anderson. He is a commercial real estate broker with over 40 years of experience all along Colorado, brokering, uh, large community assets as well as own personal assets that he owned. He engaged with us recently in 2024 as well through the Colorado Challenge Program, which was a grant program we received funding for in '24 by Downtown Colorado, Inc., um, really bring a, a wide perspective to some of those redevelopment opportunities for sites, and we think that he'll, uh, lend some great assets to us as well. And then last, we have Mr. Richard Lyon, uh, who is a civil engineer and land development professional with HDR Engineering. And so he really can look at land opportunities, uh, what it will take to turn those assets that are blighted into productive, uh, parcels for private investment, and we really look forward to his expertise as well. So with that said, we are recommending those three individuals for appointments, and I'd like to ask the two to stand up that are with us tonight. So on your right, you have Mr. Richard Lyon, and on the left, you have Mr. Craig Anderson.
Welcome. All right, welcome. Did either one of you want to come down and say anything, or are you just perfectly content back there?
I think we wanted to wave tonight.
Okay. All right. Okay. And with that, we have, so we have three separate people, so we need three separate motions, uh, for each one is the way our clerk has requested it. So, uh, we'll be doing that, and with, so, um, Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve Megan Kane for Urban Renewal Board.
Give you a motion, do we have a second? Councilmember Hersberg?
I'll second.
Give you a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay. There's one person done. Do we have another motion? Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve Mr. Craig Anderson to the Fura Board.
And Councilmember Hersberg?
I'll second.
Give a motion in a second. Any deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, and we have one more. Councilmember Hersberg?
I move to appoint Richard Daniel Lyon to the Fura Board.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
I'll second.
Give a motion in a second. Any deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. Alrighty. And, um, we have an appointment of one council member to the Pike's Peak Regional Building Department Advisory Board, uh, because Councilmember, former Councilmember now Commissioner Applegate was our, uh, representative on that board. Um, Councilmember, um, I asked you, uh, Councilmember, I'm sorry. Clerk, I asked you to look up kind of what that is and kind of let everybody know.
Sure. And since Councilmember, former Councilmember Applegate's resignation, his term also has expired, so this would be coming up anyways. But the advisory board assists the Regional Building Commission in matters relating to the administration, financing, and budget of the department. The advisory board consists of the department's five members, board of review as appointed by the City of Colorado Springs and El Paso County, and one appointed representative from each of the remaining five member entities, which would include the City of Fountain. Members of the board and its advisory committees are appointed for a three-year term. The Regional Building Technical Committee and the Regional Building Licensing Committee advise the board. These committees are responsible for making recommendations regarding requests for variances from code requirements, review license applications, and review the performance of work required under the various building codes. Notwithstanding, all department operations are under the decision-making authority of the regional building official. This advisory board meets on the third Wednesday of each month at 12:30 at Pike's Peak Regional Building offices. They also hold a luncheon that's provided every, prior to each meeting at 11:30. Unlike some of our other appointments, there is not any, um, alternate members available for this seat, so we would just be appointing one member.
And that's an in-person?
It's in, an in-person meeting, yes.
Right, they do not offer a Zoom option?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Alrighty, so, um, is there any council member that would be interested in, or maybe more than one, and we can have a discussion on who would like it, that is interested in serving on that board? Councilmember Rick?
Uh, I would be interested on serving on the board. However, uh, being that we are short a council member and will likely be appointing someone, I would ask that, uh, once that person, whoever they may be, be appointed, that we re-take a look at positions to see what the new person would be interested in serving as.
I, I really would just prefer to have someone do it the whole time because if you attend one or two meetings, and you're just really starting to understand what's going on, and then we switch out people, it makes it a little bit more difficult.
I wasn't necessarily referring to this position. I was talking about all the positions that we have, uh, because...
That's too, that's, that's going to add, my opinion, a lot of chaos. There's people that are in positions on boards and, and, um, we just, you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. But I would be willing to serve if, uh, unless there is some other member who would like to serve.
Okay, well, congratulations. You are a new... New person. And, uh, yeah. All right. So that means that's like next week. Third Friday, didn't you say? Third Wednesday? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, because they were off, we're kind of like off a week, like PPACG was last week, and it's got the whole month off. When the first is on a Wednesday, it kind of gets your whole, your whole month off. Okay. Alrighty. Something I meant to do at the beginning of the meeting, and I just slipped right by it, so we're going to do it now before we start Correspondents' Comments and Official Reports, is I would like to take a moment of silence recognizing, um, President Jimmy Carter and his, um, loss of life, his death at 100 years old. And, uh, and then, of course, I rec, New Orleans and the tragedy that we had at New Orleans, and then all the losses that continuing to go on in California. So if we could just take a moment of silence, please, and recognize those things. Thank you. All right, that takes us on to Correspondents' Comments and Ex-Official Reports. Mr. Traynor?
I have nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
After three weeks?
After, after three weeks of holiday.
Yeah. Mr. Evans, because you were holding down the fort, nothing, huh? Mr. Trilch?
Uh, good morning, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to, um, highlight that up on the wall there, besides the very nicely repainted chamber here, to complement it, the new strategic priorities, um, for the, our new strategic plan are up, and, uh, we should have the printed copies here in about a week or so to be ready to distro, so, uh, hopefully by the next city council meeting. Happy New Year, all of you.
All right, thank you. Chief?
Happy New Year, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you all. Councilmember Hinton, I just want to say, I appreciate you reading that proclamation with such passion and emotion in your voice. I heard it. And it's an important day that we're celebrating, and I just want to thank you for that. And I just have a couple of quick things. We had a really good day yesterday. We hired one, uh, brand-new police officer with zero experience, and he's got seven years Army, so he comes with some life experience, and he's got a brand-new baby. His name is Chris Nielsen, so he's day one. We swore him in in the morning yesterday, and then, uh, in the afternoon yesterday, could you stand up, Commander? Uh, I was lucky enough to swear in Commander Mallett. With 27 years of law enforcement, 18 of those in Fountain, so I had a really interesting day yesterday, brand-new and old salt. But I will say that Tara is going to be great for the position. As you all know, she's a people person, um, and that's key to our profession, especially nowadays, and so she's got a lot of work. She came in with an empty notebook today, and we filled it up. So she's, she's excited. I don't want to speak for her. If you want to say a few things, you sure can. But I just want to introduce Commander Mallett to everybody, and, uh, thank John and Jennifer for sitting on my promotion board and having an integral part of that. It was a great process, and so just want to congratulate Tara publicly.
Congratulations. And you were our first female lieutenant, correct?
First female lieutenant, and obviously the first female commander.
First female commander.
First female sergeant, right? She's been a lot of firsts, um, so she's just going to keep on trucking, but...
You better watch out.
Facts.
All right, thank you very much. Congratulations, that's exciting, and I know the kids at the school love you, so you'll have to figure out how to juggle that because they're going to miss you hanging out there all the time, so congratulations. All right, anything else? Back row, city clerk, IT?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you very much. Alrighty, Councilmember Rick?
Uh, just from me to you personally, Commander Mallett, congratulations. I wish you luck. I wish your Fighting Irish luck, but go Buckeyes. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Estes?
Congratulations. Great person for the, for the position. Happy New Year, everyone.
All right. Well, I'll tell you, the ground came, hit the ground running. I wanted to give shout-out to Fura and Paul Aragon, who's gone off as the board chair for many, many years. I think they said he'd been serving on that board for 10 years, so if you see, uh, Paul Aragon, give him a thank you for that. And PPACG, uh, from the Gazette, won the 2024 Employee, Employee, Employer of the Year, so that was pretty exciting, and a good feather in Andy's cap for the great leadership he's doing over there. Um, we did hear from one of our military partners that if you are a visitor on a military base and you do not have the military ID, um, the Trusted Traveler Program is no longer in effect, which means that Fred could have taken me in, right, and just showing my driver's license. Can't do that any longer. You have to go to the Visitors Center and check in as a visitor if you don't have military ID. So if you're going to something on a military base, allow, um, extra time for that. The legislative session has begun, and as of our first legislative meeting Monday, there was over 130 bills that have already been dropped, so yee-haw, yee-haw, here we go. And, um, the new yellow books are available, Scott, for this, uh, do we have the new 2020? Okay, all right, we'll be sure.
We usually get them this month.
Yeah, yeah, they came out last month, so, okay, we'll be sure we get it boxed down here. And, um, I, I went to a meeting yesterday where there was a speaker, Joanne O'Neill, from, uh, she is on the Governor's Human Trafficking Awareness Task Force, and she is actually the chair of that this year. And, um, she sent back these little foldable wallet, um, things for everybody to have, and I grabbed enough of them for us to maybe pass out to staff, and, and, um, I think, Todd, you may know her from your PD days. I don't know. Anyways, she used to live in Fountain, and now she lives up in Springs, but, uh, doing great stuff on human trafficking, and so if we can have these available, it's like signs to look for, numbers to call if you see somebody with it, and that kind of stuff. So, um, if you want to pass those down to Joanie, and we can get those passed out to staff maybe, and then, um, and then, uh, if we need more of them to put in the little kiosk or, they're kind of tiny for that, but put them out somewhere. So obviously a scourge that we want to, want to try to help with if possible. So anyways, but, I mean, then I reached out to Chief, and maybe you can get a meeting with her, and I don't know if maybe even, um, include the fire chief too. So it's just a lot of awareness we need to, uh, stuff that's going on, because, um, it's not just sex trafficking like we think, and there's a lot of other ways people are trafficked. Uh, they come here, they think they're going to go to school, and they end up being forced into being a, you know, maid or something in someone's house. So, um, it's just really important, so, um, okay. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah. Congratulations, Commander. Job well done. I appreciate your service. I had an opportunity last week to sit on a panel and, uh, discuss leadership with, uh, Fountain Fire Department personnel. It was a great panel, myself, Chief Graham, and Chief Cristiani were able to sit on that panel and, and look at the new futures leaders, uh, and be able to provide a little bit of expertise or examples in, in leadership, and so it was a great opportunity to be able to do that. Other than that, um, things are going well, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Thank you. Of course, Commander Mallett, congratulations, so excited for you. And I wanted to thank, uh, John and staff for the wonderful posters. I noticed those straightaway when I walked in, they looked great, and I'm just excited to see those put to action. when I walked in. They looked great. And I'm just excited to see those put to action. Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan?
Congratulations on your promotion. It's wonderful. Just wanted to talk about, we're getting ready to have some extreme cold weather coming up. And I did note that Mountain Metro is giving bus passes to get to a warming place. So I don't know if we're participating in that also.
We're not. We don't have any warming shelters in the city. Our code enforcement primarily helps folks, or if it's a life safety issue, then our public safety will help get them up to the shelters up in Colorado Springs.
Okay. So I did check on some of the, the shelters, and the Springs Rescue Mission, you know, we, is one of the go-to places, and they have a screening process. I always wonder, you know, why they have beds open or whatever. So, you know, they, and I mean, you know, you can't bring your dog, or, and I'm just saying that, that could be one of the, one of the screenings, that you can't bring an animal or something like that. So not everyone qualifies to go to the rescue mission. So just, you know, be on the lookout for those who are in need of, you know, I know our code enforcement helps with those things, but I'm, I'm just kinda concerned about, I'm, I'm very concerned about the weather. I mean, it's cold right now, and it's gonna be extremely cold this weekend. So just wanted to keep that in the back of, of our minds. And they have a Senate Bill 24 to 10, and this is the 2025 new legislative, and it's related to voting and voter preregistration. And this bill lowers the minimum age to preregistration to voter from 16 to 15 years old. So they don't get to vote, but they get to preregister, which means that, you know, if, even if they don't, you know, these kids don't really wanna drive, you know, that's one of the things that you get here in Colorado, you know, in Colorado, you get your driver's license, and you automatically are registered to vote. But most of these kids don't want, you know, my son used to say Uber all the time. It's like Uber costs money. So they are limited in the age to 15, and that's all I have.
Thank you so much. I'm not sure who you talked to at the rescue mission, but you can bring a, a dog in now, as I know they started that at least a year ago. And they do have a place. You do have to take care of your pet while you're there. You have to go out and walk in.
I just said that as an example. I didn't say that was one of their rules.
Yeah, they do. They, they screen out drugs and, and weapons, as far as my understanding. But yeah, I just, yeah, you can bring your pet in. And they, I think they had somebody give them a grant recently to build a place for them. So, yep. Okay. All righty. Okay, that takes us to Public to Be Heard. I have two cards up here. If there's anybody else who's here that wants to say something and you haven't had a chance to fill out a card, go back to the back and grab a card really quick, and you have a couple minutes while these people speak. And just pass it to Chief Cristiani, and he'll get it passed up. So the first card I have is Jovanita Downs, Downeys? Probably mess it up every time you come here, huh? There we go. Javinia Downs?
Javinia, thank you.
Yeah, it's confusing. So thanks, Mom. Javinia Downs, I live on 203 Comanche Village Drive. I'm here just to talk about the Fountain Valley Sitters Society. We used to call it the Babysitters Club, but they have renamed it themselves, and they wanted it to be a Sitters Society because they wanna branch out and do more than just babysitting. So I'm here to just let you know that right now, we have currently about 14 members that show up every day, or every time that we have a meeting. And our last CPR first aid class that we had back in October, we certified five youth, and we're really excited. We're gonna have another one in February, February 1st, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Lunch and, sorry, lunch and snacks will be provided. Anybody who's not a member of the Sitters Society will pay $30 to get their certification for their CPR first aid. And also wanted to let you know that our meetings are now the second Wednesday of every month, and they're held at the Salvation Army, and it's from 5:30 to 7:30. We always provide dinner. So they're, they're welcome to come, and any youth ages 10 to 18. Thank you. Great. Thank you so much. I appreciate you doing that. That's such a, a good thing to parents. You know, when they know that they're young, their person knows what to do in case of an emergency when mom and dad are not there at the moment. So thank you. Sorry, it's been great. We've had classes, and every time we meet, we do some training of some sort. And so a couple weeks ago, we had Diapering 101. We've had behaviors, and we're looking forward to doing more of those kinds of trainings, so that it's not just screen time. So that's what we're looking for. Thank you. Thank you. I remember one of the first times I babysat, the mom said, "I'll be back in an hour." And four hours later, of course, day before cell phones, I couldn't find her. So, thank you. It's important. All righty, the second card we have is from Destiny Angel. So if you would come down, please, and state your name for the record.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Destiny Angel. Happy New Year. It's good to see everybody. I hope everybody's having a good New Year. I'm here to follow up. From the last time that I was here, around Christmas time, and I had come in and I had asked for a miracle. I was here asking for a miracle. And I didn't get that miracle just yet. But I do have some things that I would like to talk about this New Year, 2025. At first, I didn't know if this was the platform to do so, but I'm kinda hoping that it is. I would like to congratulate our new President, Trump. I'm Team Trump over here. I am a, I'm a big Trump fan. And I would just like to use this platform to let him know that I'm really very proud. What camera's watching me right now, so I can address him?
You're here to address the council with any of your concerns.
If you don't mind, I would like to address the camera. What camera's watching me right now?
Okay, well, it says citizens may address the council, you know, the council. And so you're addressing us.
Well, I'm really very proud of our President. I'm really glad that he's trying to make some good positive change in this whole, trying to make America great again. I'm all for it. I really am. With everything going on in the world right now, I'm very, very concerned. And with such big things happening, it's scary. And in my situation, where I stand, my situation alone is scary. And I'm feeling a bit misunderstood. And I wanted to clear that up this year because I feel it necessary. When I left, before, I didn't have a chance to express or elaborate. And I would like to finish off where I started, where I ended off the last time that I was here. I was told to go to District 8 and handle my affairs over there. I think I've made it really very clear how District 8 did me, and how they didn't handle that situation with my daughter and the assault that had happened at the school. That was not taken care of appropriately. So I'm going to have to speak fast. And so I hope you guys please pay attention and try to take heed to what I'm trying to say. When my daughter was assaulted, and it was charged as harassment, and the SRO wouldn't change that, and wouldn't allow me to report the, the charge myself and press charges myself, because it was being taken care of and handled in this room, with the judge that sits in your seat, Madam Mayor, I do not recall her name at the moment, but she had told me that I'm lucky to have the case even reach her desk, a violent case at the school, which upset me. And so then I'm relying on the prosecutor, and the prosecutor then ended up accusing me, making false accusations against myself, accusing me of the crime that she didn't defend with my daughter sitting right here in this room, right here, and ended up defending the defendant. And then went and pressed, got a restraint, tried to get a restraining order on me, the same week that I tried to get a restraining order for my daughter against her attacker, which was broadcasted on social media, on several different sites that I tried, that I talked to Chief Cristiani and asked if he could, if there was anything that he could do to get that taken down. The problem here is the young lady that assaulted my daughter was just a catalyst. They end up, young ladies like that end up growing up into being women like the prosecutor that did that very same thing to me. Everybody knew in that lunchroom that my daughter was about to get attacked, but her, her friends. She was, she was devastated, you guys. I had to pick up where that, that left off. The same very thing happened to me in this room. Many people knew a story about me that I didn't know because nobody brought it to my attention, only to find out later that that, that story was about me, and it was lies, and it was false. What I don't know, and what I need to know, is, and I may owe counsel an apology, and this is what I need to know, is the judicial system, your responsibility? Because when I went to Troy to report and make my complaint on the prosecutor, he said there was nothing that he can do. And that's when I had reached out to you, because I thought, okay, let's follow this chain of command. And so that is exactly what I did, and I followed the chain of command. And your open-door policy didn't apply to me. So I'd like to know, is it, or was it ever your responsibility to take care of that?
Our responsibility is to hire the judge and the prosecutor, but then if you are not happy, like I've stated multiple times, if you're not happy with the verdict that you get from the municipal court, your next step is to go to the county court and, and appeal it at the county court level. And, and so that's your choice if you wanna do that or not. It cannot be handled any further at the municipal level. You have to go to the county court at this point.
So when I did come to you, and I brought that to you, and I, and I didn't get a response to make those complaints about both prosecutor and the attorney?
Okay, that's, we do not get involved with human resource, human, with employee issues. And so you went to, Scott, Scott or Todd would handle an employee issue, and I'm sure that that process was followed. But as far as anything that happened in the court, if you're not happy with the verdict that you get out of the court, just like anybody else, you can appeal it up the next chain of command, which in this case would be to go to the county court. And, and their numbers are, all you have to do is Google the numbers and, or, or go online, and there's a whole drop-down menu of different courts and people you can find and all that kinda stuff. So. No, I'm sorry, your time is up. So thank you very much. Your, your time is up. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, and that is the last card that I have now. So that takes us on to Item 7, the Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. So we have Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, and D. So what would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as written.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to Item 8, Old Business. Second reading of Ordinance 1802, an ordinance of the City of Fountain repealing and reordaining Chapter 17.16 of Title 17 of the Fountain Municipal Code to Regulate Harm Reduction Uses. And I know we have Mr. Traynor up there for this, but I really would like to say something before you. Turn it over to you.
Please.
So this was put on, originally brought before council way back in September, on September 10th. At that time, a motion, it was suggested that maybe we might have an additional work session on this for more information, or a full rewrite of the ordinance. And so a motion was made, and it carried, to table Ordinance 1802 for the purposes of both the new city attorney that would be stepping in, and to see what was the appeal that would be filed in the Pueblo case. And so neither one of those conditions was met. We haven't had a work session. We don't have a new city attorney to come in and step in and reveal, reveal it yet, review it yet, and see what's going on. So I would like to make a request that we consider withdrawing this tonight for the purpose of getting our new attorney, which will be here by the end of the 27th or something, so that he has time to do a legal review and give us advice. And by doing that, I, I consulted with the city clerk today, so correct me, Joanie, if I'm not quite getting this all right, that we could bring it back probably at our second meeting in February by doing that. So. Correct. So that would be my, my recommendation to council, so that we can keep moving forward on this. And I was just, so I'm open to discussion on that? With, just withdrawing it off the agenda for the night. Councilmember Hersberg?
I would agree. I would have a preference for the new attorney to review it first.
Okay. Councilmember Hinton?
Same.
Councilmember Estes?
Yes, totally agree.
Okay. Councilmember Duncan?
I agree.
Okay, so we would need a motion for that, Joanie, to withdraw it?
Yes, please.
Okay, ready? So go ahead, Councilmember Rick.
Move that we remove Item 8A, Second Reading of Ordinance 1802 from the agenda.
Withdraw?
Withdraw.
Do we need the official, okay. All right, we have that motion. Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further deliberation on that? Okay, seeing none, please vote. I guess he knows what he has to do.
Six yes, motion carried.
Our attorney needs to do first week on the job, huh? Okay. And Joanie, when that comes back, will it still come back as a second reading, or how will that come back?
No, since there was not an actual motion made on a first reading decision, that should've come back as a first reading this evening, not second. That was a misprint on my part. So it would come back as first reading, and it will come back as a new ordinance number. This ordinance number will be marked as withdrawn. So it would come up brand-new, as if it wasn't seen yet.
Okay.
Under Old Business, because it has been seen.
Okay, thank you. All righty. Well, that was easy enough, huh? All right. Now you gotta train them now. Five minutes, five, it's 10 minutes, five slides. There you go. All right, so Item 9A, Consideration of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. There were none. Item 9B, Resolution 25-002, a resolution declaring a council vacancy seat for Ward 3. Ms. Cornille?
Good evening. As we know, former councilmember Applegate announced his resignation at the last meeting, and he also turned in his letter for that, or his resignation letter. And per Section 2.5, vacancies of the Fountain City Charter, when a vacancy shall be declared to exist, the council shall, when declaring the existence of a vacancy, establish the last date for filing of a petition, which shall not be longer than 15 days from the date of the declaration. So the resolution before you tonight is declaring the former councilmember Applegate's seat vacant. And by doing so, council would then choose the date petitions would be due. And if you chose to give the full 15 days, petitions would be due Jan, back to my office, January 29th, by 5:00 PM. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them best I could.
Would that be the timeline that you recommend, coming back the 29th? Does that work best for you? What day of the week is that? I got my clock running here.
That's on a Wednesday. That's a Wednesday, which will be the, the Wednesday following the next council meeting. So I think that would allow us to, you know, give a reminder publicly also if we chose to.
Okay, and if we, if we vote on this tonight, when are the packets ready for people? Does it start like tomorrow?
Packets are currently are red, are ready and available for pickup at 8:00 AM tomorrow morning, if you choose to pick this date.
Okay.
So yes, they're ready to go. And there will be some information added to the website tomorrow morning, if, in fact, this is the way that you move forward. It's prepared and ready to go.
Well, when we declare the vacancy, that starts the 15-day timeline. Is that correct?
Correct. You declare it this evening. Tomorrow would be day one, which would make June 29th, day 15.
January.
I'm sorry, January.
I like her.
Sorry, that's a long, it's 15 days, not 15 weeks.
All right. Okay, January 29th. Okay, Councilmember Rick, did you have?
Question for the city clerk. So the petitions would be due in by January 29th, and then on the February 11th meeting is when council would be able to take a look at the packets, do whatever the next step is. Is that correct?
So once the fifth, the first deadline of the 15 days for the packet, the petitions to be returned to the clerk, then I have a, there's no specific timeline for me to make sure that all of those signatures are sufficient. Once I have the timeline, the signatures are sufficient, I would then give those to the council at that time. Then the council would have 15 days then to appoint.
There's a cure time in there, though, also.
There's a cure time in there. So if you don't have, if you're, there's something wrong with your petition, or somebody's not a registered voter, or they already signed somebody else's petition, then at that time, you would have 48 hours to cure that, and I would give you that expiration date at the time of bringing that back to you, the applicant.
So from the time you certify, we have 15 days to decide? Is that what I heard?
Correct. Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, I would certify them, and then I would deliver them to you. And you would know when that timeframe would be. I would let you know, I have these completed, and I'll be bringing them to you on such-and-such a date.
And how long it takes you to get verified of, really kinda be dependent on how many you get turned in?
Correct.
If you get 10 or 15 turned in, it'll take longer than if you get two turned in.
Correct. Which is why there's not a timeframe for that.
Right, so we can't set the rest of the dates out at this point, until we kinda see how many there are.
I'm just trying to.
No, I, I was with you. I was trying to do the same thing, too.
Yeah.
Then she said it depends on how many she- on how many she gets and how long it takes her to certify.
Yeah, I just, the public's gonna be, the public may be interested in attending when we make the selection. And I just want to give the public as much advance notice as we can.
Yeah, and we, at this point, we just.
Absolutely. And when that, it would be posted on an agenda, just like every other voting item.
Okay, thank you, Matt. That's all I have.
No, I'm with you. I was kind of the same way. All right. So you need us to make a motion declaring the vacancy. Is that correct?
Correct, and setting the deadline for the petitions to be returned to me.
Okay, is everybody, first of all, obviously, we have to declare the vacancy, but does the 29th give everybody the full 15 days? Because that gives like two, two weekends at least for people to work on it? Okay, so who would like to make that motion? Council member Hinton?
I make a motion to approve resolution 25 dash 002, a resolution declaring a council city seat vacancy for Ward three for, with a timeline ending in January 29th of 2025.
Does that work, Joni? Okay, we have a motion and we have, council member Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Oh, they would be due back at 5:00 PM. Yeah, 5:00 PM. Yes, thank you. Okay. Okay, that takes us on to item C, resolution 25 dash 003, a resolution authorizing task order number three under the professional service agreement between the city of Fountain and R E S P E C, I want to sing, R E S P. Company LLC for preliminary dam and reservoir design on the Fountain Reservoir Project utilizing El Paso County ARPA grant funds. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council and the public. So this is a resolution asking for council's approval to award a task order contract to respec for continued design of the Fountain Reservoir Project. I would like to just do a very quick and brief overview and background on what this project is for those who may be unfamiliar. Could you do the next slide, please? So just a very high level background. The Fountain Reservoir Project is a large, comprehensive water supply project from raw water all the way to customers' taps, effectively. It was first envisioned back with the 2006 Water Master Plan. At that time, it was considered kind of as a more localized alternative to the SDS project, which we ultimately pursued and are a current partner in. This project was really shelved after that point, once SDS was selected. And it really stayed that way until the 2021 Water Master Plan, when we started learning that we really have infrastructure needs for water treatment in particular, in order to continue meeting future growth demands that are projected. And so around that timeframe, once the Water Master Plan was completed, that's when we really started to revisit this project and kind of rev it up to start bringing preliminary design and permitting in. Next slide, please. So just a very high level overview of what this project is at a glance. What we would effectively be doing is taking the city's legally owned water rights that exist in Fountain Creek, we would divert those from the creek, pump them across the highway and uphill to an existing city owned property. On that property, we have an excavated gravel mining pit that's been reclaimed. We would store the water in that pit, treat it on the property at a treatment plant, and then send that water out to be served to our customers. And so we've already done extensive preliminary feasibility studies, environmental studies, and other assessments on various aspects of this project over the last two years. As you can see, we've already commenced design for that diversion, coming, bringing water out of the creek. We started design on how we're going to pump water from the creek. We started design on how we're treating that water. Really, the big key piece we're still missing on this project is starting to wrap our heads around what is needed to store that water up at the city property, to convert that gravel mining pit into a functional water retaining reservoir. And so that is where this task order comes in this evening. Next slide, please. So this is the third major task order on this project that we would like to assign to respec company. They are formerly JDS Hydro. They were the ones who envisioned this project back in 2006. We are still working with some of the key staff that helped dream up this project at that time. They are guiding us through it, and they are our primary consultant for this project. And so this is a $400,000 task order. This design would focus on how we build a dam to properly level out the southern wall of that existing reservoir, how we line the walls of that reservoir so that water does not seep out. We want it to be a watertight holding pond, only evaporation, no water coming in or out. And then we also need to design a functional, safe spillway for emergency situations to meet state requirements. And so those would be really the key focuses of this task order. Next slide, please. And so really, the big question with a task order of this size, the critical question, is how are we funding this? And so the city, a few years ago, was awarded a large grant from El Paso County to help develop this project and get it off the ground. We received $2.1 million in funding from the county. That money needed to be obligated, meaning contracted for a specific purpose, by December 31st of 2024. And then that, those funds have to be expended halfway through 2026. To date, we've spent $700,000 on the design and permitting of the other project aspects that I've discussed. And so tonight, with this award, we would have fully obligated and contracted that full $2.1 million. This task order is dated December of 2024. When it was ready to be executed, we just have to wait for the council approval process. So this is the final step for us to have all of those grant funds fully encumbered, and all of the project up to the level of design we can fund with this grant proceeding forward. And so this will not add any cost to the city of Fountain. This will not impact our existing ratepayers. All expenses born on this task order and our other task orders are fully reimbursed by the county through that grant. So this is effectively a zero dollar design for the city through this task order. And with that, I would like to open it up to any questions.
And these ARPA funds are funds that were kind of restricted. We couldn't use them for a lot of things. And so these water projects really fit into the list of things that those funds were available to be used for.
That is correct. The county received federal ARPA money. They allocated a certain percent of that to water projects in the region, and that is the umbrella under which we applied for and received these funds.
Right. Okay. Are any questions from anyone in council? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Please come down and state your name for the record.
Connie Weisenhut. Good evening, Mr. Murphy. I wondered if you could kind of educate us or talk us through a couple of things. So one, with this being a reservoir, is it just for fountain use only? And two, when we have new builds coming in, new projects, and people talk about water rights, is this something that they're going to purchase the water use from that reservoir? Or how does that work when we're looking at future builds? Because we've got more coming in.
Certainly. So to your first question of what is the, the use and who are the users of this reservoir, Fountain would be the primary user. We would build it to store our water to use for our treatment. It would have other beneficial aspects where there are times of the year, it's not beneficial for us to send water downstream and trade it with other users. And so we could pull it off the stream, hold it in this reservoir for a short period until that opportunity is better suited for us, and then release some water back to the stream, do some trading. It's done in the water market. And if we have excess space, which we believe we do, this is a very large reservoir we're building, we may have the option to lease that, some of that space out to other people who wish to do the same, and kind of generate a revenue stream with this reservoir. But the primary use would be for the benefit of the city of Fountain's utility to treat water and to manage our own water.
So one more question, sorry.
Yes.
So I'm a native of Pablo, and obviously, the Pablo reservoir is very, very large there. And there are other, like, towns and entities that retrieve water from that reservoir. And it's also, you know, recreational. So is that an intent for us here?
That is not the intent for this reservoir. We would be less than 1% the size of Pueblo reservoir. It's a very large reservoir. We own significant space in that reservoir, too, probably five times the size of what this would be. This one would hold about two thirds, the equivalent of two thirds of the city's annual water needs. Because of the site where it's located, it's very far remote out of the way. It has other federal facilities, large power lines, and other major utilities in and around that site. It's really not an area that we think is conducive to try and bring the public into. There's also the concern that as you bring the public in and allow recreation and boating, you can potentially introduce contaminants, invasive species, other things that can impact water treatment. And so really, to keep this project secure and to make sure that we can get the best quality water, we don't believe it would be a, best be served as a public amenity when it's installed.
Will this project bring some employment in for the city of Fountain?
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Will the project bring some employment in for the city of Fountain?
We would have a treatment plant that would need operational staff when built. And so as we grow into that plant, we would likely need to bring in additional city water operators. And obviously, it's a significant construction component to this project. When it gets built, that will obviously drive jobs and the economic benefits that come with large construction projects.
Thanks for your time, Mr. Murphy.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Did you, I know you asked, did you get them all answered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else in the audience with a, yes, please come down to the mic and state your name?
Sean Beerhoff. The question is that, that I would have would be is, would, do we have any evaporation controls with Colorado being a fairly dry climate? And what would the initial additional costs potentially be to add evaporative controls?
So that, those are some of the good questions that we are actually trying to work through and answer with our ongoing design work. We would like to have some kind of control system. Evaporation is a large loss of water at all storage bodies in the state. One of the benefits we have is this would be a relatively deep reservoir. And so the deeper it is, the less evaporative losses you have. As you get shallower, you have a larger body pool, the light reflects more, you get more evaporation. There are means of evaporative loss control. Some of the issues with those are, first of all, costs. They can add operational expenses. There are microplastic concerns with some methods. And so these are really, we're at the very early stages of evaluating some of those and determining, are there pros and cons, and how do those stack up against each other on these different systems. But that is something we will be considering to try and retain as much water in there as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone in the audience? Any hands up online?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All righty. So if you could back up a slide, please, to the one, one more, please. Okay, so we are on, we are on the, the store.
So we are looking at the interstate just south of exit 128.
This is a chart. So which, which step do you consider?
So what we are seeking approval for tonight is step number three for the storage of water.
Just wanted to verify that, since that, that chart had been put up there. So, all righty, so we are there. And the, being able to use this water for, in our municipal system is pretty far down the track.
Yes.
We've just got to get this part done first.
Yes, this, this is effectively to help us have a fully fleshed out project that we know is 100% feasible. This funding will not get us through to 100% perfect design construction plans that we can go out and put a shovel in the ground. But this gets us to the level where we have confidence in the various permits that we need. We should be able to acquire some of those permits. Others need fully designed plans. But we are working with the various agencies that do permitting, understanding what their requirements are. We are tweaking our preliminary design to address that. And really, one of the benefits of the work we're doing right now is that it gets us a project that we can prove is fully viable, and something that we can really package up and help shop around for grants, for other funding opportunities, for partnerships. If we walked into a room and had a sketch on a piece of paper saying, we want to do this, and that's all we had, we would not really be competitive for any grant funding. Nobody would take us seriously in financing. So this is really a critical step to help us flesh the project out and show that this is a very serious and viable project as we look for the next steps of advancing the design to completion and getting funding for construction.
Thank you. Really appreciate all your hard work on this. It's a very complicated subject.
Thank you. We have a lot of good people working on it to help support us.
Anything with water is very complicated. Yeah. All right, any questions from council? And doesn't look like anybody else in the audience. Okay, that said, what would council like to do with this? Council member Estes?
Move to approve resolution 25 dash 003.
Council member Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Thank you. And that takes us on, thank you, Taylor. And that takes us on to item D, 2024 State of Business Inaugural Report and Recommendations. Ms. Bailey?
Evening, Mayor, council, and public. Appreciate your time this evening. Economic Development, Urban Renewal Director, Kimberly Bailey. Throughout 2024, we've been immersed with businesses to understand the needs, the opportunities, and identify some of the constraints and the hindrances to grow our business portfolio. I think it's very refreshing that we're having this topic, because you just adopted your strategic plan for the next three years. And as I see on this nicely new painted wall behind me, number three is how to strengthen and support business development. So it's a very timely conversation. With that said, we'll dig into the meat and potatoes here. So business retention and expansion, VRE, is the acronym for that in the industry. This is the profile composite of our community. So out of almost 350 businesses that are registered with our local and operate locally, because there's a lot more occupational licenses than there are actually points of placement in our community, such as roofers, painters, people that come into the community, but they don't have a storefront here. Okay, I want to clarify that. But breaking down that almost 350 composite, they are broken into four tiers. Tier one is your primary industry. They're your higher wage earners. They're your manufacturers. They're your large job creators in our community. We have 22 of those. A lot of them you don't see. Most of them are in the Gateway District or Banley in those industrial corridors that the public doesn't traverse through routinely. Tier two is your secondary employers, which is considered more your main street, your small businesses, your independents that have storefronts. And there are 42 of those. And then general retail is big box, franchisees, operators from that brand component of retail. And then you, we do have a significant portion of entrepreneurs. And that is kind of your, your organic pattern of feeding into a larger business composite, if you help and support those entrepreneurs. They are located within your six business districts, as you can see the map to your right. And then these are your top performers of industry right now. So transportation logistics, government homeland security, which should not be surprising based, since we're wedged in between two different base installations, actually, three, forgive me. Peterson is to the north of us. And then you also have manufacturing, construction, retail trade, and then that automation and food service component in our industry sector. With that, from the profile, I'm going to let Nate Scholl, our specialist, come up and kind of give you some of the deeper dive into data for a couple of slides.
Thank you, Kimberly. Nate Scholl, Economic Development Specialist. Just to piggyback off the thought that Kimberly was about to mention, we performed a survey for approximately 31 of our, of our local businesses here in Fountain. And the numbers you'll see here on the screen, I'm not going to go into the details of which, but just to tell you, there are certain categories we asked about off the bat for basic characteristics of the businesses. You can see a few of those here, listed, industry sector, years in business, number of employees. We also surveyed them regarding the occupational, I should say, the size of the facilities in which they are located, as well as the space occupancy type, whether they were ownership or lease typed properties. And just some quick highlights from what we learned, as you can see here on the right, there in fact were a fairly small number of percentage that were under the kind of retail hospitality and lodging industry sector. Most of ours are largely composites of transportation logistics and manufacturing. But there is to be noted that the hospitality industry, through recurring growth, has seen about a 30, or is seeing a 30% spike in annual growth. So we are continuing to see that grow here in Fountain. About 40%, less than half of the businesses, actually are, were called legacy businesses. They've been here over 20 plus years. So a pretty good tenure for which, obviously, it shows you longevity in which these businesses want to stay. About 50% of those employ less than 10 employees in the business. So we have a large populated, a large conglomerate of smaller businesses. By definition, small business is very different from what the SBA says, the Small Business Administration. But for our sake, we're talking
But for our sake, we're talking very small independent businesses, 10 or less employees, which we do have a lot of. In terms of space occupancy, I brought that up, about a third or so have less than 3,000 square feet. And around 10% have over 50,000 square feet. Of course, you'd think those are your large retail, big box, but also, in our case, the primary industries, transportation, logistics, and warehousing type. And then lastly, in terms of ownership, there is quite a good number of businesses that do own their property. But, and that is a, you know, an advantage to them for a number of reasons. But we are looking at about 40% who happen to lease, and then about 10% who have a hybrid agreement between a lease to purchase type. Next slide, please. So there was a measure, not specifically in the questionnaire, but we received information from our business occupational licenses between 2019 and 2024, which did identify business attrition, whether we lost businesses or gained businesses over that time. And it was seen here that effectively, there was the same number of losses to gains during that time period. However, those were distributed within different industries. So on the right, you'll see that we did have a number of losses in our secondary or independent business type industries, mostly in retail restaurant, which is naturally a cause from the COVID era. Of course, there were a lot of closures during that time. But we did gain a number of new businesses, in particular, industries including restaurant, retail, hospitality, and also in medical, which was a really big advancement for us. So you'll see here in under emerging industries, if you click the next part of this, those are the major growth areas within the community for gains. Important to note that since these industries go through what we call a full lifestyle spectrum, and they continuously have evolving needs as they grow and mature, it is important that council consider the continuous and transparent relationship with the business contacts so that we can avoid such things as monopolization or conglomeration into larger industry names, such as, the example was, we had an industry that was taken over by a larger affiliate, and we didn't know the contact for that larger affiliate. So the more we can maintain those connections, the more important they'll want to stay and avoid that downfall. Next slide. So we had, I mentioned earlier, quantitative, such as business characteristics. Now we have qualitative data, things that we are trying to understand about opportunities for the business. We have a number of questions that were asked, including whether they were expanding, downsizing, or relocating. We touched on whether they were considering in any anticipated capital expenditures or upgrades to their business. Also, where were they coming from? That is, their employees and/or customer base? How were they traveling to and from the business? And then lastly, were there any needs for workforce talent improvements and/or trainings that these business employees could improve upon for continuing to build a stronger workforce base? So on here on the right are the results from which you can see, just a highlight of a couple of them. 30% of the businesses we interviewed said they were looking to expand within the next 10 years, 20% within five. Underneath that, in terms of capital expenditures, roughly 50% were looking at, had already contributed to their business through improvements, whether it was through the BIAP program or COVID era improvements just in general to some of their facilities. And then roughly 20% said they're not needing any expansion at the moment. Just of note, a couple of highlights on the right, you can see, related to the top two questions, we saw there, there's an opportunity to explore further brownfield site readiness. Brownfield sites, of course, are sites that are either actually or perceived to have environmental contamination on them. A lot of them are due to years of activities that would be focused on hazardous material waste on the site. That may include automobile industry and/or dry cleaners, et cetera. So a lot of these legacy businesses, which fall into these categories, might have a great opportunity to consider brownfield funding for them. Underneath that was mentioned about employees and where they're traveling from. We have quite a wide range of locations. So in terms of workforce, naturally, we have the Springs area and then Pueblo, but we have actually those outlying areas. Some folks even come from Castle Rock daily to their jobs. In terms of customer base, that can range from New Mexico to Cheyenne, as well as all the way to Texas. A lot of them are looking at passing through and lodging and hospitality can accommodate that. So in order to improve upon that or capture that lost leakage of secondary purchases to other businesses or seeking out other businesses while the customer base is here, we were considering things like the wayfinding signage program, which we are in the progress of implementing, as well as possible co-op and marketing programs that we could consider amongst the businesses themselves. And then lastly, workforce talent, there is quite a varied answering, answers as to the types of jobs that people were looking for. There are still vacancies in specialties and technical specialties, such as equipment operators, technicians working in the mechanics industries. That's really hard to come by for these businesses. So we were hoping and considering that there would be an opportunity in this case to create a novel job fair for the city of Fountain that has not really occurred here specifically. We've partnered in the past with our area jurisdictions, but this would be a great chance to work just within Fountain. So I'll transition. This is the data section. Kimberly's now going to speak to more of the business attraction elements that are separate from the survey.
Thank you, Nate. Before we move on to business attraction, I just wanted to caption that the survey findings were for businesses in existence today. They do not set the demographic profile for businesses that are working through the pipeline for city planning or zoning review currently. So I just want to make sure that this disclaimer is clear. And then also, we have routinely always done business surveys every couple of years. Usually, it's about every two or three year cycle, making sure what's understanding with economic trends, pulses in the community. However, due to COVID, we are a little extended during this cycle. So I just want to make sure that that was clarified as well. So under business attraction, which is totally separate from the survey component, but we did want to give you a snippet of what we procure on an annual basis under business attraction. So it's considered lead generation, and we get profiles from the state, we get profiles from our regional partners, as to businesses looking for certain assets. They need buildings, they need infrastructure, they need land sites within a certain geographical reference of an airport or a distribution channel chain. So this is a snapshot of the business attraction profile for 2024. And what you're seeing here is that we may have been introduced to 3,600 new jobs that were high-wage, primary employer, tier-one operations. They bring significant capital expenditures to your community through doing infrastructure build-out support and then turning some idle properties into productive assets as well. Most of them are in the higher plateau of industries, such as semiconductors, biochemical, agricultural, technical, food production. Defense and aerospace is huge, as you already know from a byproduct of Colorado Springs. And then energy storage, I can't say how many times the utility probably entertains a solar power generator or something along those lines routinely for our corridor. With that said, we did have 12 requests for information. We did put in for a site selection of those, but the disclaimer is really predicated by the user and the operator's needs. So they have certain needs for high base ceiling height. They have certain needs for how much water capacity on a redundancy system they require for operations. They have certain needs for the geographical area and the zoning allowances for what they do. So a lot of times, we have to opt out of business attraction because of some of those parameters that are dictated to us through the lead gen profile. But also, more recently, council and the utility locally adopted the water conservation policy in November 2024. And so it's even funneled even more restrictive of what sites can be served for larger operations and job creation in our community. Just want to make sure that that is clearly understood at this time. All right, so with that, coming back to your survey and your business retention of expansion of existing businesses in our business profile, the city and business has a lot of gains in it. And we did want to make sure that we articulated this, that we have several positives underway in our community. And this came from firsthand, from the tier-one and tier-two businesses that we surveyed. So the reception is, we're working very proactively on transportation improvements, master planning, and at the regional level and the local level needs. And so there is, there is attention to that, and there is value in that perception value. Also, multi-aging collaboration. I've been here for 10 years, and I can tell you, for 2024 was the first year that El Paso County came out and did a business roundtable. First year that the El Paso County Housing Authority came out and did a work session. First year that the Small Business Development Center did a collaborative session with small business. They've been aching to do it since I've been here over that 10 years, but it seemed 2024 was the pivotal stars that aligned to make this happen. And they had really good attendance by businesses, and it was well-received by the business community. Growing business district and cross-marketing, business recognition and awareness has come a long way. There's a huge cross-pollination of referral base at least, between the Gateway District, which is on your west side of I-25, and your Old Town District, which is where the city hall lies today. And so that was really, really enriching to hear that from the business voice. We would like to proliferate that among all six business districts. And how can we support that in the future would be the recommendation. Appreciation of that COVID impact funding over that three-year cycle was very well-received and appreciated by some of your community businesses that were able to keep their storefronts open during that time. And then the significant reduction in property theft, vandalism, things occurring on the property, and the PD response time was very well-oculated during our business surveys as well. So kudos on that as well. So we do want to shout out to those shining stars, and we want to make sure that that is being aware at this time. On the right side, we're seeing some business growth resources that are needed. As Nate referred to, you have about 20 businesses that are looking to expand and grow in the next 10 years, another subset within a shorter timeframe of five years or less. And so some of the areas that they could need is infrastructure readiness, cost-sharing measures, land development permitting, licensing, zoning, better protocols, through that very conundrum process that is sometimes experienced by your private sector. Workforce recruitment, just knowing that Fountain has jobs was a conversation that we had. A lot of times, it's the big metros that get the attention with the job fairs or the attention of where the job placement is. But Fountain has viable jobs to fulfill. And so reduce that workforce commuter pattern, right? And keep that work generation locally versus the commuter pattern. Financial health capacity is a need in the growth model, different business banking access, things like that is what they're asking for that could help them along. Marketing, wayfinding, signage, directional awareness to these business districts was pretty huge in the comments as well. And then that public safety conditions and just anything under code enforcement along those measures, the responsiveness of that is where the strengths are going forward. So next is you're looking at some of the threats and some of the weaknesses on the business front. So the top three themes are, there's a significant difficulty in business entry at multiple channels and multiple levels. So they would like to see that better improved, streamlined, better education of how to work through that process. Struggles to attract and retain that workforce. Again, we talked about that workforce attraction and retention. And then gearing up site readiness and infrastructure from both the transportation side, a connectivity pattern side, and then just the readiness of access for some of those parcels. We have quite a bit of land, right? And I know Todd knows this like the back of his hand, but they lack that readiness to serve. And that's one of the challenges that we have and the threats under business development going forward. So some of the critical metrics under that caveat of infrastructure, transportation, and utilities, the big, big advantage we heard from business, why are you here and why did you invest in this community? We have over 20 businesses that have been here for 20 years. Okay, why did they do it then and why are they staying now? It's because we're on a direct artery of the front range, and they find our utility rates very favorable from a city utility, water, and electric side. Okay? But some of the challenges that are there from that side of the house, private parcels underperforming, they look a little derelict at times, they have restricted access or very poor parking conditions of those private parcels. Those are things that are impeding new business investment. The lack of wayfinding and directional signage, I think you heard it three times, you've heard it a fourth time, I can't echo it enough for you tonight right now. That is something that's very, very much needed from our business community. The aging, undersized, limited capacity of some of these services, you know, North 85 Corridor was built in the 60s and 70s, right? And Old Town was even earlier in that stage of development. And so for us to see new investment come into those older corridors, we need to start looking at a more strategic plan of how we can be proactive when new business comes knocking. Limited options for freight rail and air supply chains for the last mile. I can say that Colorado Springs Airport is actually working on its first freight plan, and how it can drive that business locally instead of it coming in through Denver and then shipping through that third mile to here is very, very costly for business. And so we'd love to see that more partnership from the economic development side with that Colorado Springs Airport affiliate, very much so. There's some interdispersion and interruptions with broadband still. I know, and we all know, that the city has that third-party contract with underlying, and it's going through rollout succession stages. But in some of your business corridors, it's very limited or very interdispersant still. And so we still need to work on some of those measures in-house. And then lastly is just finding a sustainable means to allow for better landscaping. What I mean by landscaping is natural scape, okay? I'm not saying a big water usage, but somehow that we can support private business and their assets. Remember in that portfolio, 55% of your businesses own their properties, and they would like to do some proactive curb appeal improvements that will help more business or attract that private investment in. But we're a little restricted right now in some of those caveats. And so that was some of the comments as well that we gleaned from this survey. So that's kind of your high-profile snapshot. We boiled down to the top four recommendations, and this was from an October work session between the Economic Development Commission and the City Council. And we brought to you the findings from the survey and identified the top areas of need. We had about seven, I would say, that we boiler-plated, and then we nurtured it down to about four or three that we think we could be very tactful and support business development under your recent strategic plan that you've adopted. So your first one is business point of entry. If we can mitigate those struggles, that confusion, the lag of time and responsiveness, not only from our side, but our regional building partner affiliate, things along those channels that touch business is one of the areas of top, top need concerns. The second one is how do we cultivate a shop-local campaign? How do we hopefully, in a message to the community, message to the military installations, that business access is local in Fountain? And that you don't need to go through the thoroughfare of Fountain to get to that point of service or get to that consumer good. And so that was one of the other areas that we'll work with business on developing that shop-local campaign. The third one is creative resources. You know, we talked about the blighted conditions, the parking lots, the, the front curb appeal of private properties. These are not things that the city owns or the city regulates, okay? But how can we provide a carrot, a partnership endeavor to help uplift some of those needs and those parcels to create a better shopping experience for our local community and consumers that come in and visit through our community, is what we're talking about here. And then the lastly is that workforce readiness, that pipeline, and knowing that there is job opportunity in the local market of Fountain. On your right metrics, you can see how some of these align with your strategic plan that you've recently adopted. Some of these are under your partners' advisory plans that we work with in tandem through nurturing business development. And then we have identified a series of agencies and organizations that would be that liaison support. So we're not saying these four measures, the city or staff would bear 100% of the burden of lifting this. We would work with our partners and affiliates to share that pattern of understanding. And here's just a snapshot of what some of those plans that fed into this analysis in 2024, as well as what those list of agencies and partnership affiliates are represented by, that we work with, almost on a weekly basis in some degree or another. I know that's a lot. I hope you were able to digest some of the sweet spots of where we are doing well, where we need to improve some channels, and where we really can lend some resources going forward under the strategic plan. under the strategic plan. I'll pause there with any comments or questions glad to address.
Is that on the city website now, or will it be?
Yes, we did publish this right before we came into tonight's session. And so you can find the Small State of Business Report under the Business Climate section of Economic Development. And then we also publish routinely the Small Business Resource Guide annually, and we have just published version number eight to help our entrepreneurs and our small business ecosystem of those resources that are attainable.
So for the first one, they go to on the city website, they go to Economic Development.
And then Business Climate.
And then drop down the menu to Business Climate, and it's there. Okay.
And it is there. And then the Small Business Guide is under the same caveat as Economic Development. And then you would look at starting a business. Left navigational bar, you'll find that tab, and then that's where that publication has been posted. We also do cross-pollinate that and distribute it through the Fountain Valley Chamber of Commerce. They will receive their link by the end of the week and hopefully have that updated through the Chamber of Commerce partner.
Okay, great.
And Mayor, we can Kimberly, we can get together with you, and we can even do a banner on the main page of the site, just to highlight the briefings.
Sure. Glad to do that. That would be great.
Sure.
I think that would be good because as people look for it, yeah. Great, thank you. So some of the times when when we get, people say we're not business-friendly, we just really realistically may not have the water or the power. Or if they want to pick a lot kind of in the middle of nowhere for them to build the infrastructure is can be very expensive.
That is very true. One of the other misnomers of not being business-friendly is we're not the garden command of approval. We have to go through CDOT. We have to go through the Class I railways. Okay? And if you look at that map, going back to the front slide, your six business districts, okay, keep going, we're almost there. If you look at the map, all of them touch a CDOT or they touch a Class I railway crossover. And so that's that depth of reveal that they have to touch and be, it's a painstaking process. Todd knows it, I know it. And if there's a way that we can mitigate education and be more disclosing through those efforts, I think that would reduce that misnomer.
Yeah, I just can't stress enough for people when you're incoming, looking at Fountain to do business, please look at the zoning, call the city, talk to Todd, talk to Kimberly, find out if your business is going to work there before you sign that lease because it's just better to find it out ahead of time than to be frustrated afterwards.
Yes. And I would also say, as Nate had shared on this slide, the attrition rate, which attrition is natural, right? Business evolve, business close, businesses transform, that's a natural process of business. But what you have as a constraint is we have a less than 4% vacancy rate, which means you have zero vacancy in your marketplace unless we can support new private development on virgin land that needs infrastructure to create more available entry space is the challenge.
I was really glad you mentioned Fort Carson because as a business owner, you you almost are reinventing yourself every two to three years. Dr. Waters probably hits the same thing too in your in your office where you work. You're constantly having a turnover of military customers, which is fantastic. You appreciate them doing business with you, but you have to keep constantly making sure that you're making sure that they're aware of your services here. So I think that's something that that we really, I'm glad you're looking at that.
Yeah. And I think that shop local campaign, as the council supported as a recommendation and our EDC, will go very far in that awareness value.
Okay, Councilmember Rick.
Thank you for your presentation. Question on commercial vacancy. Is it 4% is low? What would be an ideal vacancy rate that would bring businesses in?
So usually, your sweet spot's around 12%.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're a third or less than where ideal would be.
Be such a quick transition between closures and openings because as soon as something comes online, it's quickly absorbed.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I had, Mr. Rick.
Yeah, good question. Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, can you go to the slide with the quality? There's three, four bullet points with the quality of work. I think it's the couple slides after this one. Keep going.
This guy?
Nope. Keep going.
No.
No, one more, maybe? Right there.
This one?
So the second one, struggle to attract and retain quality workforce. What do you what do you mean by that? What does that what does that mean? Break that down. Is that just business owners trying to attract quality people to work for them? Is that is that the case?
Well, first, it depends on the tier, right? And so we have the four tiers, and the top tier is tier one, primary industry, takes a very technical talent skill set, right? And so as we as the city have had trouble with that technical talent procurement, private sector is also feeling the same ways.
Right.
Okay? The challenge also is that the larger metro overshadows Fountain's opportunities for jobs.
Gotcha.
And so when they're looking to as a as an employee, future employee, looking for a point of placement, they're looking at other areas and not really awareness on us. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Makes sense. Yeah. Thank you for explaining that. Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hursberg?
Just a thank you, great presentation, lots of good information. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
So one of the things that we read and have people tell us about is there'll be businesses around town that have help wanted signs out, and then people are going in and applying for those jobs multiple times around town, you know? And and then they call back like you're supposed to, right? And then they're just not getting, then the sign still stays out there for weeks and months. And so and some of them are pretty entry-level jobs.
Yes.
So I just think people are getting a little frustrated. I don't I don't know what the answer is there, but there's people out there that are willing to work at somebody's entry-level jobs. Are businesses just nervous to hire people, fearing things are going to slow down?
No. One of the trends for business is to always have an open hiring mantra, which means they know they have the cyclical pattern of turnover, especially in low-performing jobs, right? They're not going to last very long. They get in through training, and then they ghost you, they don't show up again. Things happen, right, at the workforce level. And so one of the trends coming out of COVID is that you always have a hiring sign to allow that pipeline so you can always hopefully backfill as those occurrences happen with your workforce. So it's just a habit of what's occurring right now in the in the industry.
Yeah, I just, I think it's very frustrating.
Well, it is. And then there, you know, there's also the thing with the workforce center that they tell you that one out of four jobs is a scam, that that industry and that partner is not even hiring. And then it's a clickbait process.
I'm talking about people who are actually going into businesses, you know?
No, I understand, but the point of action is that you're seeing something posted.
Yeah.
Right? And that that's the comment that I'm making.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions from any of the audience? Please come down.
Kimberly, how are you tonight?
Good. How are you, Connie?
Good. So I just needed clarification on a few things. So you had two disclaimers tonight. One is, when was this done? Are you saying it was done in 2020?
Oh, no. This report is throughout the process of 2024. So for the first six months of 2024, we were outreach, business surveys, meeting on-site, gathering our data points.
Okay. I'm a small business owner. I own four businesses here in Fountain. First time I've even heard that anybody has come to any businesses, they didn't reach out to me. So I just want to clarify that. And then the gateway signage had been talked about all year long, and I think that a lot of the money you were trying to get from business owners, is that not available through the city to provide some of that signage?
I'm not sure what you're specifically referring to on gateway signage.
So we were talking about a pamphlet that we could give to people in different businesses to say, oh, here is a pamphlet for all of the different businesses throughout the Old Town and what they offer, and then some of the signage. So is that nothing that the city can do for small businesses?
So I would not refer to signage, I would refer to as promotional collateral material, which is different than signage. Signage to me is something on your storefront or something on a public right-of-way is signage. So to me, you're referring to promotional collateral material for cross-marketing. And right now, that's handled very much at the organic business level within the business districts themselves.
Now, I'm talking about the way, what you title it up here, the way which?
Wayfinding.
The wayfinding signage is a is a master plan that has not been baked fully yet. That will come to council by Q2. It has taken us the last 14 months to finish that master plan.
I just want to say, for having relationships with small business here, I feel that in order for more businesses to come, that it needs to be a little bit more affordable. And I know that not everything can fall under the grandfather clause or the grandfather laws, but some of these businesses have just gotten killed trying to come in and get new businesses up and going. Or some of the landscaping would be a little bit more affordable without restrictions for certain trees or plants. So whatever they could afford, as long as it looked nice, I think is something that should be considered or an option given to small businesses. And then wanted to talk about the month where City Council designated the month for shopping small. And I just wanted to say that out of many people here in the room, we only had two people that came to my stores personally and promoted shopping. And that was Scott Trainer, came to my business, sat down with me, how are things going? What do you need? What kind of support can we give you? And Dr. Deetra Duncan coming out and shooting the live video on Facebook and promoting multiple businesses that month. So if we're going to be talking about how we want to support small businesses, everybody needs to be involved and not just two people. So thank you to the two of you for that. And my last comment, we really, really need to designate somebody on business licenses. Two of my businesses have gone without a business license the entire year. It's not the first time that it's happened. And I wanted to share with you something that I was taught when COVID came out, that they were giving people these grants to keep their businesses open, and a part of that was for job retention. And as long as they had openings, they'd continue to get that money. But businesses were saying that they would never fulfill those positions because it would take away the money that they were getting. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Kimberly, do you have anything else?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions from council? All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, that takes us item to 10, City Council Agenda Requests. Anybody? No? Okay. All right, we have none. And executive session, Joanie? No executive session?